Okay, it's six o'clock and it's great to bring this regular meeting of Barstown City Council to order back live and in person. So we want to welcome everybody and it's certainly good to see some of us on the council. So we've been seeing each other some, but it's good to have the media, Dennis and Jim back and Pat, one of our regular citizen advocates and people that help our community and of course the staff. Good to have all you all back. And we are, I think, on YouTube tonight like we have been. So it's good to have that. So be conscious that not just Jim and Dennis are looking at you, but other people on YouTube are looking at you this evening. So welcome everybody. We will be going into an executive session at the end. We don't expect it to be very long. We don't expect it to take any official actions pursuant to KRS 61.810 or 810-1C, discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of a public agency. So we will be doing that at the end of the meeting. First thing on our agenda is we have a proclamation. June 14th is National Bourbon Day and as we weren't able to meet in person last year, but we're going to meet in person this year at the lawn in front of Spalding Hall at 11:00 a.m. And I'm going to ask the council to approve our proclamation. I will read it and then we plan to present this proclamation to the distilleries who are represented that day. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Congress declared bourbon as an American's native spirit in 1964, making it only the only spirit distinctive to the United States, and whereas Kentucky is renowned throughout the world as the birthplace of bourbon with its signature distilling industry producing more than 95% of the world's bourbon, and whereas generations of Kentuckians have continued the heritage and time honored tradition of crafty, mild bourbon utilizing Kentucky's farming community for natural ingredients and contributing to the Commonwealth's economic development, and whereas 11 unique distillery experiences are located in Barstown, Dulce County and surrounding counties, and whereas Barstown is known as the bourbon capital of the world with bourbon from Barstown being part of the largest export of all U.S. distilled spirits globally. Now therefore, I J. Richard Heaton, Mayor of the city of Barstown, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2021 to be National Bourbon Day." So I'd ask for a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Hibbs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Scheckels. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. I just warmed myself up, Audrey, for Fridays. It's a stutter on Friday. All right. We'll give you some things to do later if you see. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have a service request from Heartland Youth Village. We'll call on our city engineer, Jessica Pellejo, to hear us out. I'm kind of curious. I know what kind of word this is, but maybe this is.
I don't have the details myself of who Heartland Youth Village is and exactly what they do, other than it was described as a medical facility or rehab facility. But it is being located at the end of Granite Drive across from the Peddler's Mall currently that would sit behind Colton Steakhouse on that property. This request is simply to extend the sewer main that already has service, but to extend a main in front of the proposed building to the far end today, basically a future building, so that this would be a public's main being installed such that they don't have to run separate service through their existing, in front of their existing building. So that lot what's left there is very large. Again, the Peddler's Mall is on one side of the street and there's still the opposite side of the street vacant along with the end of the cul-de-sac. So this would basically just extend a sewer main again to the actual end of the cul-de-sac and they're asking us to take that in. Appointed meeting, it's the division of water requirements and being constructed for all state and local guidelines.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. If anyone had any questions, adjust it on this. I think we all have another location. It's fairly straightforward. So if there's no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the request from Heartland Youth Village to, for the city to accept a sewer extension into our system after it's installed per our specification.
So moved there.
And motion by Councilman Domes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next, we have a change order on our Public Works Building. Jessica, would you like to speak to that as well?
Yes. At the, just before the bid went out, there were a couple of items on the electrical plan that were not brought up in time before the bid to really address. So we knew going in to the bid opening, but there were a few electrical items that weren't clear on the plan that would need to be addressed at a later time. That's what this $11,649.50 was basically to make some electrical connections that were not shown on the plan during, at the bid time. If these, if that had been shown, this value would have been included in the original bid. It's not something that we can do without. Again, it's just something to clean up the contract there to include running that electrical to the garage doors and some conduit and so forth to actually hook it up that was not clear. The other small item was just some, the original plan showed that had the plumbing coming out of the building from the bathrooms before it went through our oil, water and grit separator and we actually need that to come in after that. So you don't want to run sanitary waste through what's intended to capture oils and grit from the shop area. So this was just a little bit of extra piping to tie it in in the appropriate place according to me, plumbing code and so forth. So that was for $862.50 and it was just for that, a small amount of plumbing rerouting from the original plan. So that puts the whole, total change order for $12,512. They asked for additional three days. At this point in time, the project is scheduled to be completed. I believe it's mid-August and they're on schedule to meet that.
Okay. Any questions, Jessica, on this?
That's an additional three days for everything. That's the sewer.
Yes, that was for the sewer and the electrical to the overall contract time.
Jessica's correct. These items weren't included on the original plan if they hadn't been. Original project would have been a bit higher or something. It's not like we messed up and we kind of knew this was going here. So, all right. I would ask then for a motion to approve the change order number seven, the Public Works Building for $12,512 as presented by our city engineer and recommended by the city engineer.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Hart. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Second by Councilman Scheckels. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. We don't have any HRB at this meeting. We've got two council meetings minutes, one for our regular meeting and then the other one on May 25th, the other one on May 27th where we did a kind of a quick meeting on the annual, formal annual budget. Turned any of that off officially to you guys after we did our two work, kind of work sessions on that. So is there any corrections or additions to either one of the minutes? If not, then we can approve those by unanimous consent. All right, moving along. I'll call on our CFO, Aaron Bowes, to give us our May financial report and then he'll be doing our first reading, work with our first reading after that.
All right. Thank you. As you guys are pulling up the, the handout that I posted, just to review, just a quick review, May was substantially better than April with revenue of both general fund and the combined utilities up $1.6 million over April's numbers and expenses were down $483,000 from April. Had a really good month in May. General fund revenue came in around $1.4 million. 68% of that was from occupational license fees and net profits. As you can see by the chart, we received $770,000 of occupational license. That puts us surpassing our budget by $555,000 already. We're running about 111% so far this year. So revenue has come in substantially better than we thought going in, just preparing for COVID. You know, we were trying to cut back as much as we could. Revenue is looking very good and occupational license fees, net profits is again over budget. Year-to-date, we're at $947,000, which is about 108% of the budget for the year. Other revenue items that came in, we received our final payment from the tax grant for the sidewalk project and hit the street budget. Restaurant tax came in, $133,000. That was actually two months' worth, just some carryover of timing of when I received those checks from tourism. And for the year, we're looking at 99% of our budget received already of revenue, $11.8 million for the general fund. Expenditures were at $693,000 in the general fund this month. Salaries and benefits took up 54% of that. And you can see on that chart, the restaurant tax was the next largest item and that's just a direct offset of the revenue that we received. We paid that directly back out to the tourism commission. And then over $73,000, we had the street paving. We're just trying to spend the rest of our budget for the year. Some areas we had done were North and South Fourth Street, Resher and Beale. I believe that's the cleanup of that phase one of the sewer project that we had. So we went in and repaid all those areas.
Is there much more left on paying this year, Jessica?
No. We've completed all of our resurfacing for this 2020-2022 point year of this week.
Total year-to-date expenditures were just under $9.5 million and they're running at about 82% of the budget for the general fund. Again, revenue's looking very good in the general fund. Combined utilities, we had $4.4 million revenue come in, 70% of that being service charges. KI loan sewer projects received $593,000 in reimbursements related to the ongoing sewer projects, Roland Creek and the pump stations. And we got a very large payment from the EDA grant related to the Roland Creek project, $606,000 coming in. We budgeted $1.6 million for that for this year, but we could probably get another $200,000 to $400,000 this month possibly committed. So we'll recognize that as revenue in this year with the remaining balance coming in FY '22.
You said that's on the EDA grant or?
Yes, EDA grant. Year-to-date revenue in the combined utilities is about $37.4 million or 82% of budget. Moving on to expenses. Month-to-date, we had $3.4 million of expenditures. The highest, highest category would be electric purchase for resale, $873,000 expensed in the month of May. Cable affiliate fees is another big one, $507,000. Some other projects going on. I was trying to list out some of the higher dollar items there for you. Year-to-date, our expenditures are about 81% of budget, running around $38.7 million. And I had a couple of notes there that we're currently using $1.3 million of our reserves to fund the combined utilities operations and capital projects. And just, that's better than what we budget. We budgeted to use around $2.2 million. So things are improving in the combined utilities also. And the last section there, the cash, cash balances increased $1.8 million. We're running about $12.4 million worth of cash investments. Of that $1.8 million increase, $840,000 came from state and federal grant programs. So about 45% of that was grant program related. Investment remained steady, about $12 million. And then that last chart, health insurance expenses, wanted to give you guys an update just showing that claims are coming down. You can see, I detailed out 19, 20, and 21. 18 was actually around, on the claims is the solid line. So FY '18, I didn't put on there, but it was around $1.2 million this time in FY '18. So FY '19 was an oddity where it dropped so much. But we are trending down. Expenses are trending down over the last year. So we're hoping that trend continues. So going into FY '22, we don't have to incur such a large expense.
Karen, can I ask a question in the, coming back up to the combined utilities operation capital, that $1.3 million, is that using some of the money we got from, not the carried money, what's the code, the other act that we get?
We haven't received any other.
The $1.7, $1.7, did you figure that in there?
No, that is coming, we haven't received yet, but.
It's coming, fiscal year '22.
Yes. So we had budgeted going into FY '21, we'd already budgeted to use $2.2 million of reserves to fund some of these projects we have going on. But currently, we're only utilizing $1.3 million.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, Aaron, on the financial reports? We did, as Aaron said, we did forecast a really conservative budget because we didn't know really what the pandemic was going to do to us. You know, I don't think they ever taught budgeting for pandemic. And when Aaron went to school and definitely didn't when I went to school. So it's, it was a crapshoot. So it's best to err on the side of being conservative. So I've worked, did a good job on that. So it also points to that, you know, the local economy has come back reasonably well and probably didn't get hit as nearly as hard as some others around the country. So we're blessed in that regard. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Aaron, on this? Okay. All the, all the long meetings we've had and all the mini-meets we've had is we get to do something a little more simple. We'll just do a first reading on our fiscal year '22 annual budget. So I would ask one of our council members if they would introduce the ordinance B 2021-06 and ask our city attorney to read it in summary, please.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce the summary of ordinance B 2021-06, which is the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And have our city attorney now read this first, please.
Thank you. Summary of ordinance number B 2021-06, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. An ordinance adopting the city of Barstown, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has received and reviewed the budget proposal and made desired modifications, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Barstown, Commonwealth of Kentucky, Section 1, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022 is hereby adopted as set forth below on the chart. Section 2, that any and all ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. And Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect July 1st, 2021 after its passage of publication as required by law.
Okay, this is our first reading and it summarizes the budget that we worked on over the last few meetings. So we don't have to take any official action, but I think it should be noted, if you notice that, again, to balance this budget, we are forecasting we're going to be using reserves of $2.253 million to balance. So that's primarily utility side where that's coming from. So anyway, it's, there's a lot of needs. Jessica's smiling tonight, but she doesn't smile during the daytime. She's got a lot of work going on.
And again, back to your point, Bill, that $1.7 million listed here is from the ARP funds. That's what we're expecting to get this year.
This year.
Those other uses of unrestricted reserves, there's, I don't, I just show revenue expense. I don't show beginning balance here. So although it shows almost $40,000 out of depreciation fund, it already has $540,000 in it. Same thing with the sewer enhancement fund. I'll show a use of $1,601,000. The balance adds up, May 31st was $1.45 million. So we have a healthy beginning balance and we're just going to be utilizing the money that we have available to help offset some of these project costs.
Okay. Any other questions, Aaron, seen?
I'd just like to comment, Aaron, I bet you that attach there was helpful to me. Was anybody else talking about that? Thanks for doing that. Help me understand what's going on here better.
Thank you. Aaron helped, Aaron helped with the numbers and I tried to do the explaining.
Yeah. I thought you explained it okay.
Thank you. All right. That'd be the first reading. We're going to do a second read our next meeting. Next item on the agenda is important staff and our committees. I know Chief Man has got a couple announcements regarding the fire department.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. It's going to be a busy month, so we'd like to reach out and invite everyone to attend some events we're having. June 23rd at 8:30 a.m., we're having, or we're hosting, supporting, I might have to look on a chamber, connect breakfast at the new firehouse. So we'd hope that everybody can come to that. And that runs from 8:30 to 9:30. Then the very next day, the 24th, from noon to 5:00, we're having the Battle of the Badges flood drive. So if anybody would like to come over at the place there on Fourth Street, the yoga union hall, that'd be there. You come in, you sign up who you want to get blood for, police, fire, EMS. Now, we're hoping everybody goes for fire this year. But we haven't come up with a badge yet. We're going to have to come up with a badge.
Where is the location on Fourth Street?
The Knights of Columbus, I think they call it the Barstown Chamber.
That sounds.
Yeah, it's the old days and stuff. But hopefully everybody can come by. If not, maybe you all recruit some people over. Our goal for that drive is 40 units. So we're kind of high on that drive. So hopefully we can reach that. And then on the 27th, is a Sunday, everyone should have gotten an email. We're going to have the official dedication of the new firehouse and also the Francis Lidian conference room that day. That starts at 3:00 also. So we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Nice to be able to finally show it off to the public.
It is. It is.
Been a news for a long time now. Okay. Next item, we don't have anything on unfinished business. I think Chief Preston, you said you didn't really have any to port this evening?
No, I think you undiscussed us losing our hangar at the last meeting. So we do have the insurance that will help us give you the forward work. I'm giving that to everyone.
Okay, good. All right, on the new business, we have a reappointment for Davis Lee Tiger Houston for a three-year term on this committee. Tiger's been on that committee for many, many years and happy that he's continuing wanting to serve. So he's got a lot of experience. He's a good, he's a good three-year member. So in a motion to reappoint Tiger Houston to a three-year term from July through July, July 21th through July 9th of 2024.
So moved there.
All right. A motion, we have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilwoman Hart. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Tiger said the pay was too good. He wasn't going to get that. Couldn't get off that. Okay, it's fireworks time of year. Starting to get some applications with these locations. So we've got two this evening. One from the Barstown Apostolic Sanctuary TNT fireworks. That location.
Is it Walmart?
Yeah, this is at Walmart. It's, and request by Pastor Acre. So what I'm doing, I guess we're going to do both of these together. But then the second one, St. Catherine Academy is going to be at O'Brien's Farm Equipment Out on New Haven Road, St. Catherine Academy in question, New Haven. Both of them have their nonprofit statuses in place. So I need a motion then to approve both of these fireworks applications.
I'll make that motion there. I'm trying to flick back over and see what they were. I can make a motion to approve the Barstown Apostolic Sanctuary and St. Catherine Academy for their fireworks application.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Buckman. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Domes. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried. They did tell us, just like everything else in this crazy supply chain issue, just like ships for automobiles that come from China, so the fireworks. So it's, you better get there early to, wait till July 3rd, there may not be anything there. So, all right. We got some, a couple cemetery deeds. Mary Seger is transferring eight graves. I guess, is that transferring to other family members in their name?
Correct. That's settling the estate for Harriet Seger. Mary's transferring those into three different trusts.
Okay. All right. And then, am I going to mess this one up? Militia, Militia Maxwell and Joanne Simpson, both purchasing one grave site each. So no one's got any issues. We can approve those by unanimous consent. All right. Then does any of the council members have anything to bring before the council this evening?
I have one thing, Mayor. Just noticing that we, I may have missed this at the beginning of the meeting, but we kind of skipped over the receive input from the pub, from the public. And I noticed Pat was sitting out there and he was holding paper. I just want to make sure we gave him the opportunity to speak since it's our first meeting back in person.
All right. Just good to be here.
I'm just good to be here.
Okay, that's good enough.
He had a non-silly directive request from his wife to me directly that he talked to me about before the meeting. But he gave you plenty of time this next year before I have to try to figure out how to get it worked out for, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to have you back, Pat. I'd like to show the interest. If nothing else, I don't really have anything to, to report as far as mayor's update, so if you could, then I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for certain to K R I sixty-one point eight one zero one C, discussion of pro rata payment litigation against or on behalf of the public interest.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion, is that, motion by Councilman Hibbs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Scheckels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. We will go into executive session. Don't anticipate it taking very long, and don't anticipate any official action, but if you want to stick around, you're welcome to. Okay. All right, we are back in our regular meeting, so let the record show that we took no official action during our executive session, and that's all the business we have for this evening, so if there's nothing else, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
Show me.
Motion by Councilman Buckman, and second by Councilwoman Hart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. We are adjourned.
Thank you, sir.